We'll move forward on to the next item, which is the 9/15. It looks like we're there. Presentation by RCRC President and CEO Patrick Blacklock. Pat, please come on up and have a seat.
And Matthew, if you can get the slides up for Patrick. Thank you.
Is it?
Flip it so the front of it, front part of the button is down. Well, try the other way.
There you go, I think.
You think it, not yet. Is it working?
Yeah.
Sam, can you hear him? I think Sam hears you.
Okay, good. Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Board members, for having me here today. I appreciate the opportunity to be here and visit with you a little bit about RCRC. I'm also hoping it can be very informal, and so anywhere you have a question or there's a topic of interest to you, please stop me and we can dive off and talk about what's of interest to you. I do have a few slides, though, to kind of help steer the conversation, but again, stop me anywhere you have an interest, if we can go to the next slide. This slide just gives you a quick snapshot of RCRC's members. As you can see, we go from the north part of the state to the south part, and both from the Nevada line to the coast. And we have two primary responsibilities. One is advocacy at the state and federal level, and the other is to be an innovative service provider and to really be there to provide resources to particularly our small member counties where you might not have the capacity to do it on your own. And so that's a big part of our strategic plan as well. If you can go to the next slide. This gives you a sense of our organization, and probably many of you know RCRC for our advocacy, and certainly that's front and center in terms of our strategic plan and the work we do. But also, we have an Economic Development Division, and it's really meant to be there to amplify your local efforts, to be a force multiplier. And then we have what we call our Business Development Division, which is our incubator for some of our more entrepreneurial efforts, including around broadband, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. And then along the bottom, you can see the actual affiliated agencies. We have Golden State Finance Authority, which is a joint powers agency. National Home Buyers Fund is a nonprofit. ESJPA is another joint powers agency. Golden State Natural Resources is a nonprofit, and Golden State Connect Authority is our newest joint powers agency, and I'll talk a little bit about some of those as well through the presentation. Next slide, please. We did just complete our work on a new strategic plan. The board adopted it in December, and I wanted to point out some of the topics there because I think that they will be of interest to you as well. As you look, we have four goal areas, and as you look at the top, working down, equitable access is our first goal area, and you can see that broadband, housing, and health services are some of the top priorities there. For housing, it's really about trying to help our members find pathways to create more affordable and workforce housing. And we heard that as a continuing topic when we were out talking to counties and developing our strategic plan, that increasingly, they were finding it difficult to, for teachers, their own staff, et cetera, to be able to find housing in their counties. For some, it was increasing the migration that happened with COVID from more populated areas in the county, but also the increasing use of vacation rentals was really reducing supply, and so asking us to help on that effort. And we're just beginning, as I mentioned, the entrepreneurial side of the house is just beginning to look at that. And then health services is really trying to expand access for health in our rural areas, particularly around behavioral health and substance abuse treatment. For some of our member counties, they may not have a federally qualified health clinic or may not even have behavioral health treatment capacity in the county or substance abuse treatment capacity. So when the state looks at directing more monies for criminal justice treatment, particularly in those areas, and directing it to CBOs, community-based organizations, some of our members don't have that. And so it's looking to how can we assist them in being able to expand that capacity.
I have a question for you.
Absolutely.
There's, and I'm kind of speaking in a philosophical way, I guess. There's always the effort to help out with low-income housing or affordable housing now is the acronym or the term for it. But I think that makes things difficult for rural communities because we already struggle with resources, especially financing, to make things happen here, to provide the quality of life. And one of the things that we struggle the most is teachers, doctors. And with low-income housing or affordable housing, those do not have an attractive starting point for getting those people into our communities. It ends up that they either go into a specific portion of our communities or end up commuting into our communities to serve our community. Is there something that maybe RCRC is looking into? Is there something available at the state for more of a moderate housing plan so that rural communities can attract that kind of skill set that is absolutely required as a foundation for quality of life for, I mean, teachers and healthcare is some of the most important things that we need here to be able to elevate the rest?
You're not alone in echoing that sentiment around workforce housing. In fact, if we were to dive deeper into our strategic plan, it uses the term workforce housing for that reason. And you're right, that most of the funding streams are devoted to affordable housing, but even for those funding streams, a lot of times in rural areas, they don't work because the project needs to have oftentimes over 80 units in order to pencil out with the funding streams and that, say, tax credit financing. And that leaves workforce housing without any dedicated funding stream. So we're doing two things right now. Short answer is, I don't have an immediate solution to suggest to you because I don't think it exists. So what we're doing is meeting with nonprofit developers. We're meeting with entities that represent housing associations to find out, to get a better sense of what tools are in the toolbox, and then which ones are available for rural counties, which is a subset of those, and then of those, how effectively are they used? And what we're learning is not really very effectively for those counties that say they want to do a 10 to 12-unit affordable housing project, and we haven't found anything really for workforce housing presently. So what may come out of this effort is two things. One is to identify what are the tools in the toolbox that are available now, and who are the both nonprofit and potentially private developers out there available to partner on those efforts? Secondly, what legislative changes may be needed to better support rural counties and their housing needs? And that's what we're, we're in that fact-finding R and D phase of it right now. Previously, housing didn't appear in this way in our planning efforts, so it's something that's really, over the last couple of years, I think, grown in need and intensity, and so we're trying to get our feet under us right now to figure out how we can assist.
Just, let's follow up on that comment, because I think it's a great comment, but just here in the rural counties, as we said, you know, plenty of grants and other things that are available, but I know the conversation that comes up every time when we're talking about affordable housing, housing loans and other things, it's the income levels and the qualification levels that really make it a challenge because what they're saying is, yes, there's grants available, but you really have to be below that poverty level. And we need to really look at those numbers, who can access that? And I think, I'll just go to a specific example. We had a HCD loan after one of the large fires here that came into the county, and the qualifier for a single-family home was about $36,000. So it was a challenge to find folks that were even to qualify for that, qualify for that, to spend the money here. And I think we're going to run into that as we keep going on and looking at this. So the medium income, household incomes, because you always have, here in the rural counties, we have very hard workers, a good workforce, usually two people in the family working, and then you get above those income levels, and it just, it makes it challenging. So I really would like to look at that at the state level, and obviously HUD and other, there are federal dollars that have a challenge, but I really think that needs to be a part of that process and talk because the more access we get into the housing market with the higher income levels, you know, and I'm not saying real high, but $80,000 to $100,000 is more realistic to help to keep onto that threshold. So anyway, I just continue on those conversations, and obviously doctors and other folks are going to be above that, but what we're attempting to do is get those new homeowners in here. And I know you had a slide later on.
Yeah, I'll talk a little bit more about that.
So income levels, I think, is another big part is really challenging in the rural communities because what we're almost saying is, well, to qualify for these, you got to stay below poverty level. And that's not what we're trying to encourage. We're trying to encourage growth, next generation change, and that's the challenge. So anyway.
Yeah, a little bit I heard from a county was when we tried to do a recruitment, for example, for a behavioral health therapist or public health nurse, we don't have housing for them. And you're right, they're not going to, affordable housing, they're going to be over that income level. I wish I could say that I had a ready-to-go solution for you, but if it's out there, we haven't identified it.
Just want to bring it up on the air, that's all.
And so that's part of what we're trying to do is to figure out what can be done. We know there are some programs targeting workforce housing that work in the urban and very high assessment value areas, but they're not going to work in the rural areas. And so that's part of what we're trying to sort out. Part of our strategic plan is to really grow and strengthen our advocacy efforts, and part of that is to really try to build on the relationships that board members have in our member counties and to use those in more effectively going forward. So you'll see more opportunities, hopefully, for that. Healthy communities, it's probably not a surprise to see wildfire, forest resiliency at the top of the list, and we'll talk a little about some of our entrepreneurial efforts in that in a little bit. And Sue Visser, Simon, it's good to meet you in person since we both fell in the PG&E Underground Advisory. I'm used to seeing you on Zoom, so pleasure to meet you in person here.
I know you'll probably want to talk about the wildfire issue a little bit later, but I know you've been alerted to our tree mortality issue. And, you know, right now, we're just trying to, we pulled the research together so that we have the data, and now we're just reaching out to all of our partners to try and figure out how we can have a strategy going forward to harden our communities and our roadways from that.
Yeah, thank you, Sue Visser, for that. I think you've even been in contact maybe with Stacy Heaton on our team. I thought I saw some email exchanges, and I took the time to come in on 53, and I was telling Chair Crandall it was really striking to look up on the hillside and see the tree mortality that's so visible coming around that way. So I know that Stacy's been working, is well aware of the issue, and last I'd heard, Cal Fire was coming up to do some assessment work, and so if, it sounds like things are moving forward, but we're a resource if they're not, that's for sure.
They're moving forward, and we did have a meeting with Senator Maguire. He asked if we'd been reaching out to you, and so I think we just need to take some more steps forward.
Okay, I can put a note down, Stacy.
That would be great, thank you.
And then infrastructure and economic development is also in healthy communities. And for us, this is really meant to hopefully fill in gaps where, I'll give you an example. The infrastructure bill that passed includes a lot of funding dedicated to, for example, electric vehicle infrastructure. And for a lot of our smaller counties, they don't have staff devoted to developing electric vehicle infrastructure plans, let alone being in a position to go after the competitive grants associated with that. And so what we try to figure out is how can we provide some economies of scale, for example, and potentially be there to help pull down that money and make sure it gets to our rural members as opposed to just flying past them and going straight to the urban jurisdictions, which could take every dollar that's available based on need. And so we try to use our team to look for those opportunities to, as I say, fill in the gaps and make sure that our rural members get connected to the dollars that they might not otherwise, just because they don't have the staff capacity to be going after those more competitive processes, and that's just one example there. I'll go on the next slide. As I mentioned, really, I think that you know RCRC well, or know us historically from our governmental affairs work, and this is just meant to give you a sense of kind of what some of the priorities are as they approach the state and federal legislature, the state legislature and Congress this year. Wildfire and drought is going to be at the top of the list for both. Broadband is a continuing topic, and particularly as the funds that came through the budget last year now go to the CPUC for rulemaking on how those funds are going to flow, we are actively engaged in those conversations to make sure that our rural counties can effectively grab those dollars as well, based on how the rulemaking proceeds on two primary areas. One is how the funds are allocated by geographic region, and secondly, a program called the Loan Loss Reserve that will be important for potentially financing broadband projects. So those are some of the key areas where we are active. We did start, some of you may have even participated in a monthly legislative call that occurred last week, and that will be a recurring opportunity to hear the latest, but also hopefully provide any feedback you may have on pending bills and things that you want us to consider and look at as well.
Just to give you an update, I see that you have a CPUC on there, and I was on that legislative call, and I appreciate that. I think it's a good quick-fire round of kind of being updated of what's happening, what's important from the perspective of RCRC. Looking forward to the next one. I believe you said it would be monthly or something like that. It looks like you've been busy because you joined us from your vehicle rather than your office. But on the CPUC, just wanted you to be aware that we did draft a letter in response to the rate increase from PG&E requesting that that does not happen. We'll see what happens. It's going to be up to the judge. But also, we do have some important water utility problems here in Lake County. One of them happens to be in Lucerne, one of them happens to be in the city of Clearlake. There are private water companies that are only overseen by the CPUC. It is the most, some of the most expensive water in the state of California. And then when you start looking at the demographics of the community it serves, it's also one of the poorest communities being served by these utility companies in the state of California. And their increases, for example, in the city of Clearlake, we also drafted a letter to CPUC saying, please don't. But it's a 30% increase on top of what it already is. And so just wanted you to be aware of some of our interactions with the CPUC for some of our local issues that we have.
That's helpful to get that feedback. I'm taking a few notes because part of what I like to do is then go back and debrief with the team back at the office in terms of what I heard, and so I try to take notes so that everybody gets a good sense back at the office in terms of what's of interest to you here in the county. And admittedly, I hadn't heard that, we knew water and wastewater was a hot topic, but not the CPUC angle, so thank you for sharing that.
Now, the drought is one thing, but the cost of water, when it comes down to it, is another. And just for further elaboration, in Lucerne, it's Cal City water, and in Clearlake, it is Golden State water. So Cal City and Golden State.
Cal water, yeah.
Oh, Cal water.
Cal water, yeah. And they, and I think it was 2017 or 18, they lowered their prices. However, incrementally, they're asking to increase it here and there. They've been working really well with the community, however, it still doesn't take the price down despite the fact that it's a disadvantaged community, so, yeah.
And when I talk about our Economic Development Division, part of what we're looking at, too, with that infrastructure bill, beyond EV is water, wastewater is another potential area where, if he hasn't been here yet, our Economic Development Team is trying to go out to meet with the individual counties to catalog your top infrastructure needs, and then we're trying to prioritize within that what we might be able to assist, and water and wastewater is one example where we're going to try to make sure our rural counties get connected with the infrastructure dollars that are available.
Awesome, thank you.
Next slide. I just want to talk a little bit about affiliates because they're a little bit less well-known, and they may have some opportunities for you as well. And Golden State Finance Authority, which is a joint powers agency made up of 56 of the 58 counties and over 200 cities, and the National Home Buyers Fund, which is a nonprofit, again, an RCRC affiliate, but national, both of them provide assistance to those trying to purchase homes, primarily in the form of down payment assistance. And so, for example, if you have that teacher who wants to buy a home in Lake County and doesn't quite have the funds available for the down payment, they can, that person can get it from one of two places, a family member or a governmental entity, and Golden State Finance Authority is that governmental entity. And it can come in the form of a gift. Sometimes it comes in the form of a second. It depends on the type of program that they're looking for and what they qualify for. But one of the things we try to do is get the word out, and we work with lenders and realtors throughout the state to do it. And one of the driving interests is we know that community stability is strengthened through homeownership. We know that wealth creation for individuals is strengthened through homeownership. There's a fair amount of research on that, and so this entity, Golden State Finance Authority, really tries to assist in that effort. And if we go to the next slide, you can see that we've had about 158 families have been assisted through the two programs in Lake County with down payment assistance. That gives you a sense of the magnitude. We also do energy efficiency programs. So for those looking at PACE programming, for example, which is property-assessed clean energy, wanting to do energy retrofits, looks like we've had 14 done in Lake County as well. So those programs are available to anybody in Lake County who has an interest and may qualify for them. Next slide. The next program is our Environmental Services Joint Powers Authority. 22 of our counties are members of this, and it's really meant to assist them with regulatory compliance in the waste management world. And so for our smaller counties running landfills, it can be daunting to stay in compliance with not only Cal Recycle, but the other regulating entities as well. And so ESJPA is a place where they come together. We have consultants on staff, technical staff on staff, to help guide them through that regulatory compliance process. ESJPA is right now updating their business plan and looking at what the future holds for them, and looking at whether they should stay focused on waste management or should they expand, for example, to water and wastewater and assisting member counties with water and wastewater regulatory compliance. That's a question that they are asking themselves, and over the course of the next six months, we'll be working to develop a business plan that aligns with what that answer might be, but to come up with their business plan for the future and to determine if they're going to stay focused on waste management or potentially expand into other areas of environmental regulation.
And I just want to add to that, that I appreciated the support from the ESJPA for the treated wood debacle that we all had to walk through. So thank you very much for that support.
Next slide. Golden State Natural Resources is one of our newest affiliate entities, and this really came about out of the recognition that to really treat forests at the scale that needs to happen in terms of forest health, there needed to be a better outlet for the biomass that is otherwise presently not marketable. And so Golden State Natural Resources has come alive to hopefully identify a pathway for that biomass, and we've made a lot of progress, and really, this is actually the year where the rubber is going to hit the road, so to speak, in terms of that moving from concept to implementation. And what it would be is to take that biomass that is otherwise not marketable and convert it to what's called industrial pellets, and then these pellets would be potentially shipped overseas as a replacement for coal, primarily in Asia, for their energy production. And so countries like Japan are making the shift to comply with the Paris Climate Accords. They're shifting from their coal-fired plants to a hybrid of either coal and pellets or, in some cases, holy pellets. And so we've gotten tremendous interest from what we call off-takers, those that do that shipping, in the product if we can deliver it. And so now we're focused on actually getting in place the logistics to deliver it, and we've actually purchased two sites. We're about to initiate Sequo on the two sites, and our goal is to get to what we call financial close by early next year, where we would actually have the financing in place to go to construction on two plants that went in place and could then be our initial pilot into this concept. And assuming it all works, then it could then be scalable out to other sites throughout California. But we're starting with these two sites, and so far, it's looking very promising. We've even had conversations with two of the largest pellet producers in the world who continue to express interest in purchasing our product when it becomes available, if not partnering beyond that. So it's looking, it's all green lights right now, I would say, no red lights presently. It's still a little ways to go, so I don't want to say that it's a sure thing. But I think if you were to read some of the forest planning documents, this challenge of not having an outlet for the non-marketable biomass appears time and time again. And so hopefully, this is going to fill that void and be at the right place at the right time to then allow much greater scale of forest health projects to move forward.
Where are the sites?
The two sites are, one is in Tooeleme County and one is in Lassen County. And those initial sites were picked for a couple of reasons. One is being on a rail line because the volume of product will require rail delivery to port, and then it'll be shipped by container ship, or not container ship, but shipped to Asia. And then, secondly, it was based on fuel stock assessments within those sites. We obviously wanted to pick sites that, this is meant to be self-sustaining once it's put in place, so we'll need to get some financing for the initial startup costs and construction. The financial feasibility report shows it to be self-sustaining after that. So we wanted to have more than ample fuel stock to allow these initial ones to get started and start running. So that's why those two sites were chosen based on fuel stock assessment. The goal is, and frankly, if, I wasn't in the meeting, but my understanding is the Mendocino National Forest Supervisor lamented the fact that there wasn't going to be one on the west side of five to initially start, but the goal is to get there and to ultimately do that. We need to prove the model here with these two sites initially, but we recognize that there's going to be a need beyond that. We are having conversations with PG&E as well. PG&E's vegetation management team has expressed a lot of interest in the project of potentially being a partner, and they may be able to, working with us, be able to transport further distances. It may be possible that you'll see, for example, some of their vegetation going to the plants even over the greater distance. More to come on that. We still have a fair amount of research to do on that, but the next year is going to be telling. The next year will be when this gets off the ground, hopefully, if it's going to do so. Next slide. And then our newest affiliate entity is Golden State Connect Authority, and this is a joint powers agency that just formed over the last few months. Their first board meeting was in December. Their first executive committee meeting was just a week or so ago, and it is made up of 37, soon to be 38 rural counties, and it's, let me expand a little bit on what its primary purpose is initially going to be, and it's listed in those three phases. But the first phase was to ensure that everyone, all those blue counties have broadband strategic plans. And so for 26 of them, we've submitted a $4 million grant to the Federal Economic Development Administration to complete broadband strategic plans for them, hoping to hear, any day now, in terms of whether that grant is going to be successful. The second is, we have consultants on board to act as technical advisors and to provide technical assistance to our members. One county, for example, was ready to go potentially with a private, public-private partnership for a community within that county, but they really wanted a peer review. They were relying a lot on what the private partner was sharing with them in terms of the feasibility of the project, and understandably, they were a little nervous about it. So we have experts that can come in, provide that peer review. We're already funding it. It's not like it's an additional cost. They're just there to be a resource when our members need it. But the third item is probably what's most exciting, and that is to actually go in and put fiber in the ground. And the model that we're looking at is based out of Utah, and it's their form of joint powers agency called Utopia, and it's a public access model. And what they do is they go in and put fiber into areas where the private providers are either unwilling or unable to do so. They put that fiber in the ground, and then they open it up to private providers to provide internet services through that publicly-owned fiber. Think of it like an airport where the public entity comes in and builds the airport, but then private airlines can come in and use it. It's not dissimilar to that in terms of the model, and they have been self-sustaining with each of the financing things they've done over the last 10 years. And they've, there were a lot of lessons learned in the early years prior to that, and so we have the advantage of being able to take advantage of those lessons learned, and now that they're on a successful track, hopefully be able to emulate that. The GSCA board, through staff, is now evaluating about a dozen sites throughout California using what we're calling business evaluative criteria to make sure that the financing will work for these initial sites. We're also looking at ensuring the data to ensure these are underserved, unmet communities in terms of their fiber needs. And the goal, kind of like Golden State Natural Resources, is if we can go in and demonstrate success, then this hopefully will be scalable quickly beyond that. And I mentioned at the start of the conversation that the state had funded a loan loss reserve that went to CPUC for rulemaking on how those funds are going to be distributed. Well, Golden State Connect Authority will need to access that loan loss reserve in order to do the financing for these projects. So part of what we're doing on the lobbying side is making sure that that loan loss reserve is constructed in such a way that rural counties can access it through GSCA. And it's looking promising. Every reason to believe that it will be done that way.
I have a question. With PG&E's 10,000 underground miles, are you part, is there going to be a partnership there because?
It's been a recurring theme at the Underground Advisory Committee, but even aside from that, we've had some one-on-one conversations with PG&E to suggest to them that we need to find a way to have the answer be yes when asked, is there going to be conduit included in that undergrounding, and that GSCA is ready to partner with them to figure out how to make sure that the answer is yes? And so those, we are supposed to have a follow-up conversation coming up soon on that topic, but rest assured, yeah, we keep repeating it in every forum with PG&E that not only does the answer need to be yes, but we're here to help in terms of we have an entity ready and willing to partner on that. And that message goes to the counties, too. Even though we're focused on doing one of these or two of these demonstration sites to kind of get our feet under us with actually putting fiber in the ground, the door is open for counties that are ready to do something sooner than that. And GSCA can provide as little or as much assistance as a county might want. So a county might say, I'll pick an area I know well, Nice. The county might say, we want to put fiber to every home in Nice, and we're going to do, we want to think about doing a public-private partnership, and we've set aside some ARPA money to potentially do it, but we don't quite know what the organizational structure should look like, and we need some technical assistance to figure that out. GSCA could help. Or the county could say, we want to do what I just said, and we want it to be publicly-owned. We think we've got a financing structure in place, but we don't have the mechanism to continue to own and maintain this in the future. Would GSCA consider that? Yes, let's have a conversation, see if we can figure that out. Or could say, we want something to happen there. We've got some ARPA money, we're willing to throw it in to subsidize it. Could GSCA figure this out? Sure. So I say that to say that there's going to be multiple pathways happening at the same time, and they're going to need to be parallel, where we're working at the, looking at the full-blown project that's based on the Utopia model, but recognize that there's funding coming that you're going to need to potentially move quicker on some projects. We're there to be a resource, as little or as much as you want. I think we're all going to be building the airplane a little bit while we fly it on this, and we want to be there to be a partner with you on that effort. But again, where you need us, where it's helpful to you.
I think the complications of broadband is everybody wants to do broadband now, and I think that only complicates things where you have the ARDOF dollars coming through, you have AB-14 coming through, you got the infrastructure bill coming through, and I hope that we can navigate through all that so it complements all one another rather than becomes layers of almost competitive ways to get things done.
That's been a recurring worry we've heard from board members, and so one of the things we've done is put up on our GSCA site is we'll have a table that shows all the different funding streams, when they become available, what they're eligible for. We have a glossary. We have a glossary. We're trying to work on an org chart because one of the things that's confusing, I think, is how many entities are in the broadband space and who's doing what? And who should you talk to and who should you, who should you not? If you can go to the next slide, that might help provide a little illumination on what should you be thinking about now. We put this slide together just to recognize that while we're building out GSCA, there's going to be momentum, interest, drive to do something sooner, as I mentioned. And this is meant to give you a sense of what are some options you could do. One is if you don't have a broadband task force, advisory group, whatever, you can form one of those. Second is with your ARPA money potentially set some aside, a number of counties have done that, so they've got some when the time is right. Third, if you're not already doing it, making sure you're identifying your middle mile gaps. And you may be doing all of this, but this is meant to be generic. But identifying those middle mile gaps so that you can be advocating fairly aggressively to the CPUC on if there are any gaps in Lake County, making sure those get considered. And then for midterm, there are some more innovative things that are happening. Nevada County is doing a programmatic EIR so that some of the initial sequel work is done that then their, I think their hope is that that will incent private providers to come in because it will be one step that's been done to help ease the path forward. You can look at your policies, dig once type policies if you haven't. I mentioned broadband strategic plans, really what those are meant to do is map out the county, what areas need fiber, what areas may be a long ways away from fiber. And so you're looking at wireless, satellite, other solutions, getting those mapped out, getting those in a plan, getting actionable strategies around those. And then long-term is to get the fiber in the ground or other broadband infrastructure. And that's where GSCA is one option. But you could be picking an area and you could say, doing, you know, requests for ideas or something like that and hear from private providers, how would you do it? What level of subsidy would you need to do it? What would the organizational model look like? And start to get something moving on the, on a specific area so that you can pilot something yourself in that area. And that's what that longer-term idea is meant to be. You look at the other question.
Yeah, I have a request, actually. So we've had conversations with some of the stakeholders here, especially the larger stakeholders, MediaCom, AT&amp;T and such. They've said yes to sharing maps with us, but I do not believe that we still have received those maps. And that's kind of those things that they hold dear so that only they know where the fiber optic is. Is that something, I know that leverage is how I see RCRC being the best asset for the county. How do we work together so that you, we can use your leverage to get what we need? Is that something that RCRC might be able to help us with is to obtain all that infrastructure map so we do know? Because we keep asking, and it seems one of those difficult tasks to finally get them. They'll say yes very easily, but actually receiving those maps are a whole different concept.
That's been a perennial source of frustration, I think, for counties. Hopefully with, if we get the grant to do the broadband strategic plans for the 26 counties, that's going to be an essential element. And hopefully by 26 counties working together through the RCRC umbrella, it will have that leverage that you're mentioning. For me, part of the reason for GSCA in this space, we don't have to be the ones to put the fiber in the ground. But my hope is that by being there, it's going to, a little competition's a good thing, maybe is the best way to put it. And it will spur interest in private providers serving areas that they might not previously have considered. So we're hoping that it will spark conversations and be a bit disruptive to the status quo in a good way and hopefully get to getting the data layers you're talking about. One last thing I'll add on that is we've actually added GIS capacity in-house at RCRC for that reason. I would love to be able to pull down a layer of fiber and compare it to the PG&E, I'm pointing you because you're in the Underground Advisory Committee, to the PG&E undergrounding project, put those layers over each other and see where fiber exists and where it doesn't. And I think we're going to have to get to that point where we can easily pull up a fiber layer and you can pick a community, we were talking about Finley earlier, you can pick the Finley and see where does fiber exist there and where it doesn't, and have that layer. And then if you're talking to private provider, you could say, we want to serve this community. We know it doesn't have fiber. We know from our own modeling, and GSCA can help on this, what it's going to cost and we know what that gap is. So let's talk about what a partnership looks like to get fiber in the ground. That's one option. Another option is to publicly deliver it. That was very long, but it answered your question. I hope I answered it somewhere along the way.
That you're having the same difficulties in other counties, which is unfortunate, but at least it makes me feel that we're at the same place. We're not behind.
Yeah, we had a call from the little community of Winters in Yolo County just, I think it was last week. And they were struggling with the same thing. They don't have a good idea where fiber exists even within the city. And pulling it up from the private providers has proven to be very challenging. So I think this is a, this is a challenge that we're all facing and all going to have to work on.
Thank you.
Next slide. That might be the last. So as we look forward, where we focus, well, obviously we've talked a lot about broadband and our joint powers agency, our strategic plan implementing that's going to be a big piece of it. And then getting Golden State Natural Resources off the ground, this is a big year and excited about it. And so far, so it's all looking good on that front. So I'll stop there. I'm happy to answer any other questions you have or take any information that you may want to share with me back to the team.
Speaker Simon.
Yeah. Just want to continue that conversation on the advancement of the electrical charging stations and, you know, all that technology that's coming down the road. Obviously, everybody sees fueling stations now and a decade from now, it's going to be different on how you're fueling your vehicle because of the mandates that are coming. And I really want to make sure in the rural counties, and I know you guys are thinking about this, but continue that focus because it's the same challenge we're going to have with folks being able to afford homeownership and rents and everything else that's going on in rural communities. Now you've got to buy an electrical vehicle, you've got to buy a charging station, put it on your home, and that's going to be a real challenge. I know that California and the budget has put some stuff for low-income homeownership and home charging stations. But for us here in the rural communities to really make sure that we don't miss out on that as we're moving forward, because that's, that's going to be the next challenge, I think, in this transition to the electrical vehicles that are coming our way. And it's happening here in Lake County, you know, more and more folks are, you know, buying the hybrids and other stuff. But it comes down to that challenge. If you don't own the home, where's that charging station going to be? I can't put it on my apartment or my rental home. So looking at that, you know, because it's just going to make the poorer folks with another challenge. Not only I had to get that electric vehicle, but now I got to find somewhere to charge it all the time. So real challenges, I think, coming down the road, but we just need to be doing that. I know locally, we're going to be talking about an item next week called the REN Rural Energy Network, you know, with the CPUC, Lake EPC, I'm going to bring it to the board on behalf of our Lake LTA and APC board and talk about those rebates to go to, increase those rebates in our rural communities. So just want to make sure we stay focused on that. Obviously, fire resilience and other things are a challenge. But what I did like to hear is the capacity issue with RCRC, really understanding that our rural communities, that's where we're lacking. There may be billions of dollars, hundreds of millions of dollars out there right now for fire resiliency, forest management and stuff. But the challenge we have here locally is we're tapping out our nonprofits, the agencies and ourselves to make sure that those dollars are coming to the counties so it can benefit the most vulnerable. And that's the challenge we're having. We're doing our work and trying to have the conversations. I think there are opportunities there, but if RCRC would just help with that and say, hey, listen, Lake County, this is a great grant we think for you. Here's a resource. We'll provide the technical assistance to get through that. I know CalUAS is stepping up in the state also to help in some of those things. But that's a real challenge right now. So just continuing that direction, you know, I want to thank you for that focus at this point, but not let it go past, you know, how beneficial it's going to be in the future for us.
It's affirming to hear you make those comments on EV infrastructure because that was a very question we asked our officers yesterday, which, and we've been asking the CIOs as well, because we're moving fairly quickly to try to position ourselves around EV. But we didn't want to get out over the front of our skis with our members. We wanted to make sure that indeed this is something that our members thought was important too. And to your point, may not be, as some of our mountain counties say, we don't have a lot of Teslas, but the Ford Lightning, I think the first couple of years of production on the pickup, EV pickup, is already sold out. And the Chevy Silverado pickup, as I understand, the reservation sold out in 12 minutes. And so I think the concern is more from an economic development perspective, is making sure our rural members are prepared when fleets start changing over, for example, to electric pickups. Is the infrastructure there in that county to support it? Because if not, there's going to be an economic consequence. And so setting recreation and Teslas aside, I think that there's going to be a commercial impact. And it seems like it's accelerating that switch over. And like, as you shared, I'm concerned that it'll be like broadband, but 10, 10 years from now, it'll be similar where the capacity isn't there if we don't prepare now. And in particular, with the infrastructure bill having the dollars specifically carved out for EV, that's why the moment is now potentially for RCRC to step in and figure out a way to provide economies of scale in getting that. So our team's going to be back at the NACO Legislative Conference next week. And as part, we'll be advocating to try to find a way, a pathway to funding going directly to the rural counties so that they can complete EV infrastructure plans for each of the counties and then come up with actionable strategies that then the remainder of the funding could potentially fund. So that those resource constraints don't limit you in potentially being able to get that done. We're kind of following the same model we did with broadband on that to where we can help administer it and get that done for you, for counties that want to do it, for counties that want to opt in. So long story short, thank you timely to get that affirmation. I appreciate it.
And it all goes to the economic development and obviously the long-term health of, you know, our communities because it's a challenge. Everybody's used to, hey, you put up a gas station. Well, that's going to change here in the next state. It's going to be a charging fuel station that's lined up and kind of, the technology is advancing as it goes there for media marketing, everything else. So the opportunities are going to be there tied to economic development. But standalone stations like this too, battery, solar, generator, always being able to back up, it's going to be an investment into our, you know, health of our mother earth as we move forward. And it's going to make some unique opportunities. So they're here now. People are starting to design these things. There's plenty of names out there, but understanding how we move forward. And we know that some of the rural communities, at least in some of the areas, I just saw a story where the community of Yountville says, no more new gas station, no more fueling stations. But, you know, so that transition's happening. We've got to be prepared for that as we go through. Not something we're talking about here, but I'd just say a neighboring community has made that decision. And so now the next stations are going to be built are these EV charge stations, how quickly can they, you know, you get in and out and what that process is. So I just want to stay focused on it because I see that as an opportunity here for rural communities to really get ahead of it because it's less challenging. You don't have millions and millions of people you got to charge. You've got 67,000 people here in the county of, 50% of it is electric. We've got to have that ability to get that done.
And they commute further.
Yeah.
That's, that's the biggest issue is we have people that can commute 100 miles a day and we have to have that availability for those people even commuting around the county.
And I think it even goes further than that. I appreciate the comment and the discussion on this. It's also the people that want to come and visit and enjoy themselves and recreate in Lake County. They want to go home at one point and if there's no place for them to recharge, it's going to be quite difficult. I think that the important part to that is not so much at setting up the EV stations. I think we're going to get there and we need to do a better job of implementing AB 1232. I know that RCRC has been trying to get us on there and we're going to get there. A little behind on the mandate from the state on that one. But I think it's also an issue of the CPUC ensuring that PG&E is providing us the capacity to carry all these. Because it's easy to set up stations that take hours and hours and hours to charge up your cars. But when you go to the urban areas, you have the 15-minute stations that can fill up your battery in 15. And that's the kind of stuff that we want because it's not going to work out if everybody has to wait an enormous amount of time. Granted, please stay and enjoy yourself during those three hours, but it doesn't meet the actual technology that's available. It just keeps us behind again and again and again. And it's, we need that better capacity. We have transmission lines that come through here that end up in these suburban and urban areas, but we're not provided that same level of capacity that they're being provided. And so we need the CPUC to create an equity across the state of how much power is available to us because it's going to be more demanding.
And I could imagine that being another one of those data layers. We talked about broadband earlier, but the same could be true of energy capacity, EV capacity, having a GIS layer that shows up for each individual county and where the gaps are.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Comments?
Yeah, one last comment here. Obviously, I know we have the pilot program going for the pellets and the fuel, but put Lake County on that list for more conversation. So, you know, because I think there is an opportunity there. We have I-5 101. Obviously, we don't have the train, but we have an opportunity for, you know, a main thoroughfare both ways. And we're looking at enhancing that through Lake County with Caltrans and other things. So just thinking along those things, oh, we're going to plug it while we're here in Lake County, please, you know, as we move forward. I know, looking to expand, it's a pilot program as we, as we move forward. So one last final comment too. Today, you know, I just want to make sure in rural communities is where most of the tribal nations are located. And that communication and collaboration, I think, with tribal nations is very important. There's a big conversation going on in this country about equality and inclusion and the indigenous people in this country, you know, really need to be at that table. And I know it's a challenge, obviously not every relationship is perfect when you talk between government agencies or tribal nations and local rural counties. But it's a real important because I look at it as an opportunity for involvement and inclusion where it can enhance the lifestyles that are happening for all residents in the county. So I just want to make, take the opportunity to make that statement today. So, thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
And I'll make one final comment. And I apologize, this is somewhat of a soapbox, but the state of California is really into the idea of equity. But I think it fails miserably in how it implements it. It implements it at the population level, but it doesn't implement it at a government agency level. So every county is not equal. But yet we all receive 1% of our sales tax back unless we have an extra tax on top of that, then we can add on to that. But in a poverty-stricken area, it's difficult to add that. And yet we want certain people and population that meet certain criteria to get a hand up so that they can get into a better opportunity and a better place. But we're not doing that with counties. And I think that, I think that our idea of equity is made more to appease voters than it is to actually make the true change. Because if we can get some of the extra benefit of equity in this county, we could do so much more to help our people rather than them being helped from a different indirect way. And I brought that up to the state and they were kind of stunned and didn't know how to answer me when, if you really believe in equity, how come we're treating Lake County the same as San Francisco in the way that you return? And even then, there's grants made available, yay for us, but if we don't have staff, we still can't get the same access level to grants as somebody like San Francisco would be able to. It would be really nice if that word meant something across the board rather than in a very niche area that helps the people that are making these decisions. Because we could make great strides if we were just provided that leg up that we can't always have access to. And things like CSAC and RCRC are always helpful to us, but it would be nice if the state can see that equity is more than just people, it's also how we create the quality of life in the environment that the people live in.
Oh, that makes perfect sense. You look at the social determinants of health and having an investment that's oriented to that as opposed to a population density, I can understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So thank you for listening.
Yeah, so I'll add a couple of things. I think I'd like to let everyone know that since I've been working, we've been working with RCRC and then since Pat's taken over, I know as the president, he's been very engaged when it comes to not just our county, but also with the local tribes. The situation we were talking about with broadband, he asked for some information and got him some of those contacts. Dan Miller is the new president from.
Dan Miller?
Yeah. And so he asked to be, me to be on the regulatory committee because there came, a discussion came up about some policies that involve tribes. And so they've been very engaged with me trying to figure out how we can make that verbiage sound a little more up-to-date, you know? Because we know that these things change with, with time. And so just, I just want to highlight that RCRC has been very responsible in that, in that manner.